Okay, so let's go ahead and re-call our work session in order into order. As you may remember, I was doing a quick review of our Sandy City Council meeting minutes for tonight's meeting. We went through any changes to the agenda. One thing to note is that our presentation, our oath of office, we had some family emergencies, so we will be postponing that to our next Sandy City Council meeting. Then, under our consent agenda, we have our city council meeting minutes, our renewal of our intergovernmental agreement between Clackamas County and Sandy Transit, and our resolution for a TA grant application for our comp plan update. Are there any questions on the consent agenda?
I guess the consent, one of the items on the consent agenda was for paying going after grants for the comp plan. And one of the questions I had is, you know, it appeared like the extra grant funding was to be used to reach out to populations, you know, of different ethnic and cultural backgrounds and all, which is great and fine. I'm just curious, is there any other requirements that come along with that money? One of the things, questions I have, Jordan, is whether or not there's any requirements about, you know, minimum lot sizes or any of the things that kind of applied to. What happened was under HB 2001 and three, there was a bunch of proposed development code on that that we didn't have to adopt. And so I'm just curious as to whether or not taking this money obligates us to anything.
We'll see if we can get that answer. I don't think so to that level. You're right that it does have requirements in terms of the type of outreach and statistics and stuff that we need to gather through the whole involvement. But in terms of any other requirements of what the comp plan would include, I don't think it comes with that kind of.
All right. Under ordinances, we have two public hearings. One is a legislative land use for our Parks and Trails master plan. Anything for clarification before we do that? All right, our second public hearing is quasi judicial land use is for the annexation of three, seven, six, eight, five Olsen Street. Any questions for staff before we go into that tonight? All right, and then under old business, we have the consent of assignment of hoodview disposal franchise. Any questions on that? And then under new business cover structures program, this is getting a program put into place for our general fund allocation. Any questions on that?
I was gonna ask a question about, it identified that as general fund funding and I was under the impression we're doing the ARPA funding on that.
Yeah, and this is the clarification on that. The program itself will be run out of the general fund. The recommendation is that it'll be funded by the ARPA funds. But I think we're just calling it general fund. It's the city instead of the Sandy River General Agency. And it's just where the program's going to be located, that development department within the general fund.
Then we'll have a report from our city manager, our committee and council reports, and then we'll adjourn for the evening. With that, let's go ahead and kick off our work session for this evening on our special service contract program. Jordan?
So David Snyder is going to give the presentation on this grant program. We gave a preview to the council, or I did, and it's part of one of my city manager's reports, about proposed changes to how this grant program is managed to get their council involvement with reviewing applications. So David was going to present that, and I think the staff report did a good job of giving kind of the overview of the program and some of the requirements that you might want to include. And I think our recommendation is kind of streamlining this process, give council oversight, but also allow council and whoever you'd like to be on a perhaps a committee to review the applications. I think we excluded the applications in the report to, so you could see those and kind of see the task ahead of whoever gets appointed to that body to manage this program. But in general, too, as part of a work session, if there's other comments you have about this program that the city's been doing for a number of years now, would love to hear that feedback too, or facilitate that feedback through the subcommittee as we think about, you know, future bienniums and in future years with this type of grant program. So David, if you're, you're live and able.
Can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, fantastic. So the special service contract program, this is a grant program, just very briefly for nonprofit funding that was developed during Seth Atkinson's tenure city manager back in 2015. It was developed to reduce the number of requests to council for funding by our local nonprofits. At the time, we were getting requests for funding on average every three to six months, and council asked up if he could do something to kind of consolidate all of those requests into a city program. The program served its purpose fairly well over the last three biennium, but there are a couple of elements of, that could really benefit from some council review and direction. Specifically, the composition of the review panel and the identification collection of performance measure data from applicants. Staff would like to make a couple of suggestions for amendments to inject more direct council control into the program. So the first proposed amendment we have, previously, the review panel for this program consisted of two city councillors, three staff members, and two members of the community at large. I'm sure a couple of you remember these meetings as we had them. It's become more and more difficult to find members of the community that are not either aligned with the applicants in some way or, or be just willing to spend their time engaging in this exercise. It's hard. This is kind of a hard thing to get members of the public excited about. Neither of our community members from last time can serve in that role again. So we would be, if we were to keep on with the, the, the previous review panel, we would have to go out and find two other members of the community at large to serve on the panel. Also, this council has indicated that it's interested in retaining more direct control over city programs. And honestly, staff feels that this program would very much benefit from more direct council control. So the staff recommendation here is to, to change the way we review these applications. And for the mayor to appoint a council subcommittee every two years to replace the previous review panel for the program. This subcommittee would meet towards the beginning of the biennium to review applications, ask questions of applicants as needed, and set final funding levels for the program. Biennial review would also include the economic development manager as a staff liaison to the subcommittee. If you prefer, which we would assume you do. This would increase direct council control over the program, and it would also make it possible to make the second proposed amendment to the program, which is the SEC, SSCP program currently collects performance data from each applicant in return for the funding we provide. Up to this point, the program staff has determined these performance measures on their, on our own, and provided the results in a program summary like the one attached to the council report entitled SSCP nineteen to twenty-one Performance Measure Report. However, staff has really been, just been making educated guesses as to what the performance measure data the city council would find useful. So if the council agrees to the first proposed amendment by creating a subcommittee to review these applications, councillors could also directly determine the performance measures they would like to see for the projects they choose to fund. Also, instead of staff compiling this information into a written biennial report, and this is just a suggestion, perhaps a more efficient method for distribution of data would be for the applicants to self-report their performance measures to council. This could be done either in a written report for them, or I think more efficiently in a presentation to council, which, you know, perhaps we could get all, all four of our current applicants to to engage in a presentation to council in which each one of them could take five to 10 minutes to report their data out at a regular council meeting. Council might find it useful to hear from the applicants themselves about how the funding they receive from the city Sandy is utilized and what impact it's having in the community. And one other thing, just to bring up, since COVID struck, multiple applicant, we've, we've had some issues with multiple applicants have started to have difficulty getting the reports in on time, causing staff to have to reach out multiple times after the deadline to, to get this information. If they were doing in-person reporting, you know, in front of the city council themselves, that would immediately solve that problem. So also in here, I've included a summary of the, the five applications that we received this time around. They are from the four organizations we have traditionally funded. One, one of these applicants has actually put in two applications. And I'm not entirely sure why that is. I think maybe they think that it's possible that only one of them will be accepted, and so they, they'd like to try two different, you know, two different applications to see which one you guys would appreciate more. But they are from Ant Farm Youth Services, the Action Center, the Sandy Historical Museum, and the Chamber of Commerce. Just to give you, and since, you know, if, if council does agree to these recommendations, since only a couple of you be serving on the panel, we wanted to give you just kind of an idea of what traditionally these funds have been used for with each one of the applicants. Three of the four applicants are, are, have remained with the programs that they have been funding up to this point. For instance, Ant Farm Youth Services uses the money they receive from the city. It goes directly into their Community Connect program, which takes youth volunteer, volunteers and matches them with elder and disabled citizens within town to, to get done basic chores like stacking wood, mowing lawns, cleaning gutters, those sorts of things that senior citizens and those that are disabled have, have difficulty with from time to time. The Sandy Community Action Center typically uses their funding distribution to, to enhance their food box distribution and to increase community outreach specifically for the Spanish-speaking community. This historical museum for this last period and the period previous has been using their money to fund a student intern program, which is really helping that organization out a lot. That, the organization needed a little new blood. The average age of volunteers and staff over there was getting up there. And they really wanted to try and find a way to engage youth more effectively in the program. And so they came up with this program. They, they hire two part-time student interns that work 10 hours a week during the majority of the school year. And it, this program is, this grant has really been working out great for them. It's gotten some students really involved in the tourism sec, sector, and they've even had some interest in students who have completed their schooling here and moved on to college that might want to come back and work in the museum at some point. And then finally, the Chamber of Commerce, the chamber is is trying something a little different this time. They've put in an application to continue the Sandy BRCs, the Business Resource Center program that they, that the Clackamas County has been funding over there. The funding for that program, my understanding is, is, has run out. But this first application is to see if they, if it would be possible to continue some of the efforts of that program. And the second application they put in is something that's been mentioned quite a bit lately from some of the businesses that I've been talking to, and it's for Sandy Area Chamber of Commerce Community Jobs Board. That would be open to everybody, not just chamber members, be open to anybody within this, any business within the city of Sandy and probably, you know, in the greater Sandy area, we wouldn't want to exclude somebody like Ever Fresh Fruit Company from this, just because they happen to be 10 feet on the other side of city limits. So that, that gives you kind of an idea of what the applicants are asking for this time around. But of course, there, the, we would go into much more detail as the subcommittee reviewed the applications.
All right. Thank you, Dave. Appreciate it. Just for clarification, are we now fully working here? Like, if councillors wanted to close off, they can close off, just so you guys know, you can close off your screen if you want to close off. All right, questions, comments for Dave? I know, for me, thank you for the recommendations. None of these are really earth-shattering off of the process that we had last time. You know, so who participated, I think last time, I think it was, well, you weren't a councillor yet. I know, I was there. Carl was there, Kathleen was representing the public at the time. Were you there, Lori? Okay, okay, Lois Coleman was there. So, and it basically, the committee set up our, some general guidelines, rules as how we were going to make our decisions, and we made our decisions, and then those decisions came to council. I don't view this really as all that different. We have three councillors that will be participating. They'll set their own guidelines and rules as to kind of what's going to lead their decision-making process. They'll recommend it to council. The big change I see is in the reporting and self-reporting. I think it's a great idea. I'd love to have them come back in and tell us about the great things that they did with the fund. So I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go to move forward with this process. Anybody else?
You know, I know the $60,000 seems like kind of small potatoes to some people that, you know, it's not that much. On the other hand, when you kind of compare it, it's twice of the amount of money that we gave to the initial Parks and Trails park repairs and maintenance budget, just for reference. It's exactly about the amount of money that we dedicated for the biennium for our library, the Sandy Library and the extended library, not Hoodland, to get, expand their collection. And so, you know, those are things that we have probably underfunded. We did add more money to the Parks and Trails account after the budget, but those are things that, you know, to some extent, you know, we took general fund money and are giving it to somebody else rather than putting more into that. So with that kind of measure, I always want to make sure that if we're giving this money away to some nonprofits, that they're doing, you know, as good a job, or, you know, as important a work and providing the kind of results that we could otherwise get, either doing more fixing more parks, park equipment, or getting us more books in the library. So that's kind of the, the measure I go with. The thing that I noticed on our last go-arounds, and I've been on more than one of these biennium applications, and they're really fun to review. It's really important to get application format, you know, a standard application format, because in the past, we've kind of, they kind of rolled their own. And so you end up with this apples, oranges and pears, and you're looking at things that you really can't compare very well. So a standardized application with a standardized budget sheet is really important to have. And then I do like the accomplishment reports that several of the folks have been providing us, because it's very much, you know, easily quantifiable, measurable, attainable goals about how many people they serve, and, you know, how many boxes or, or, you know, seniors got served, or just whatever it is. It was just really helpful. I think that's important to have those kind of measurable goals in the report. When I hear people's, you know, when I hear that people aren't getting their accomplishment, grant accomplishment reports submitted, I feel like that's kind of, you know, a black mark against you getting another grant in the future. You know, that's part of the process. When you get a grant, you need to kind of report back what you did and with the money. And if you can't be troubled to do that, then I really kind of question giving them more money in the future, no matter how, you know, wanting they are. So I think that's really important to, I don't, you know, whether or not they do it in front of the councillor or not is not, you know, if that helps get them here, but in, in any case, I think they need to submit the accomplishment reports by a certain date or risk not being considered for the next year's grant. And I am interested in being on the committee again.
Cool. Carl?
Yeah, I've also been on several of these, and typically, these come from organizations that are just on the very verge of being able to get all this stuff together and putting it on the table. To me, the more complex we make it, the more tough it is for those folks to just be able to find a way to submit it. Asking for lots of reports, I don't think it's unreasonable to ask, you know, how'd you go? What did you do with the money and what accomplishments you did? But I think I'd like to see the requests and the way we ask people to apply, say simple. I think that, aware of especially the ant farm folks who are just really very productive in our community, but kind of on the edge of being able to keep track of everything. I don't mean to say that we shouldn't keep track of every penny that we put out there. But I like the idea of being able to hear them present their own presentation. That gives us a chance to back and forth a little bit and define what to do. This has always been one of those kind of projects that has been good for the community. I remember we used to get requests all through the year. So being able to find a place where we just say, this is the time for you to apply is been real productive for us as a way to make sure we don't end up having to spend four or five different council meetings discussing whether or not we should give these people money. And sixty grand is pretty small, frankly. And you get six or seven people applying, brings the dollar down quite a bit. So I think it's very productive, very encouraging to see people do this.
Yeah, yeah, I think it comes up. I mean, I think it's great that we have, you know, we don't have a lot of nonprofits in our community. You know, we're a small community anyways. But all of these have been amazing jobs for our community and things that we can be proud of. So I think it's great, going back to what Carl said beforehand, we can drop the year, but then we wouldn't have anything budgeted for. So what this allowed us to do is have something budgeted, saying, okay, cause, well, there you go, that we ran out. Try, try the next cycle. Cause we never had anything budgeted for these. Anyway, I agree that a small subcommittee going forward with it and some type of reporting back of. I like it.
Cool. Yeah. So I'll, I'll take the other side of the, just to balance us out here tonight. So I, I think these four entities, like, they're great. So I'm not dissing on them at all. Why just four? Do we really only have four nonprofits in our community? Or is this, this feels like, sorry, David, but this feels like kind of like our covered structures and other things where we're not hitting the, all the possible entities and making them aware and going out and soliciting and getting applications. I mean, if we're seeing the same people apply after time after time, unless there just isn't anybody else out there.
In the, in the last cycle council, to answer your question, we did have, or not the last cycle, the cycle before the seventeen, nineteen cycle, we did have six applicants during that period. One of them was Oral Hall. Unfortunately, Oral Hall is outside of city limits. And another one of them was the Wolfpack Theater, which was classified as a nonprofit. We very much liked their application, but I don't think we had enough funding at that time. We encouraged them strongly to reapply and even gave them some ideas on how to strengthen their application. Unfortunately, they went under shortly thereafter, so.
So how are we, just to Don's point, I mean, how are we advertising to the different nonprofits that, the program?
Thus far, I've just been advertising it via media. I advertise on our city's website, and I advertise on the city's Facebook page and, and reaching out to the posts.
I'm curious about the Sandy Kiwanis Christmas Basket Program. That's
Yeah, it just seems like there's a lot of good things out there that should have been talked to.
Yeah, do we, David, do we know how many total nonprofits we have in Sandy, in the city of?
I don't, unfortunately. I could look at the, I could, I think that's tracked on the business license list. I could look at that.
Yeah, yeah, if, maybe if we could get that, we could have that. And then that way, we would, we would kind of have an idea to, to Don's point of how many we have out there. And if, and if we're, if we're reaching out to all of them so that they do have an equal opportunity to apply for these funds.
And then my other source of some frustration here is the window's closed, and now as the new councillors, we're being consulted. It's like, wait a minute. Once again, David, you've got people that represent community that we can reach out and help you with this, sharing the information, but you gotta use us. And, you know, shame on me for being naive, I guess, but why, why do we run it as a biennium? Just don't want to do the, the applications every year?
We coincided with the
You don't want to do it with the budget cycle.
And that was one of the reasons why I wanted to make this work session, is just get this kind of input. Now, you heard some of the history of how this program was established. You get into this, you know, kind of cycle of the same organizations. These organizations that receive the funding, it's my understanding, a lot of them were the ones coming and asking the council directly that we want funding. And so they established this program. These are the big, well-known nonprofits in town. And we have, honestly, similar questions. No, you know, are we advertising this? Should we make this a broader program? Should we involve the council more? Let's have a work session. You know, through the budget process, we, you know, adopted the program again, $60,000 for the biennium, you know. And similar to the last biennium, same kind of process of when the, you know, application notice goes out. And that's when we said, well, this council is taking a different stance now on how they're involved with these type of programs. Just come back to the work session. By then, the application process had already started and had been approved through the budget. But trying to put some spotlight on it now and seeing how we can make changes moving forward.
So the only item in this whole thing, I feel, of any consternation or item for debate for council is, is is there interest in reopening up the application process or just doing it better differently next time around? To your points, only a biennial program, so the next time around is not going to come for another two years. But, I mean, what do you guys want to do?
It could be every year. I mean, it was, you know, initially thirty thousand a year, right? You know, this kind of started with, you know, we had Sandy Helping Hands typically had asked, and we had donated as the one organization that we had supported. I mean, we supported the chamber in different ways, but then it was the Historical Society was coming and asking, if you recall, those over here, because they were having a hard time keeping their doors open. And they were coming back to the wall every time, so. But we could do it, you know, every year at thirty thousand. And then background for that following year, but it just, that committee just needs to be times, which I don't
I would support doing it every year, partly because in the past, you had people coming forward when they had an issue of rhyme. So sometimes those things didn't get to you until three quarters, halfway, whatever through the biennium. And to lock it in at the very beginning and then not have anything for a year and a half now might limit some of the possible grants that we might be able to get if we were to wait and do something again next spring or whatever time we decide. But it is something that does come up once in a while. I know I'm kind of connected with the museum folks, not because I'm old, but boy, history. Yeah, I know, it keeps up all the time. But I know that there are lots of things that do come up as a surprise, and so it wouldn't hurt to do some during the biennium.
I have, I have a couple of questions. One, could, since we may have kind of missed the advertising door. And, and it seems like we're spending all our money for this biennium. Could we, if we ran, we didn't advertise anything to see if there is anybody out there that we missed, since we have this ARPA funding, could we use a small amount of that to to kind of run an additional one to make sure that we got everybody this year?
I think we could. I think you'd have to change a little bit about the criteria and how the applicants apply and what they're applying for. So, for example, if it's a nonprofit that is assisting individuals or organizations that have been impacted by the coronavirus and show that, that's how the money would be funnelled, then certainly, yeah, that could be one of the ways that we
I mean, the perfect example would be the chamber's proposal for that.
I think there's probably, we could take, you know, some of these existing applications and figure out if they, if any or all of it needs for the ARPA. But like Sandy Helping Hands, the, you know, I do know that Martin Montgomery and those guys do kind of recruit money for the Christmas Basket Program, and that's a huge thing. And so, you know, throwing, you know, that's a really big help for the community. So, you know, Jen, having, what would be helpful, David, is to have the email contacts for all the nonprofits in the city so that at least an email can go out to them all at the same time, and, you know, with the applications and every year or every two years or so.
So if, if, so I guess my question is, and, you know, I guess I haven't read the fine print. So when we look at funding these projects, are these, cause like Kiwanis, you know, there, that food basket program is the entire area, right? It's not just the city of Sandy. It, it's boring. It's Hoodland. You know, it's everywhere. And so, so I don't know, you know, what kind of criteria is built into the application process for this? Yeah, and, and that may be the case. Like, it truly was a question. You know, I, I would be interested in looking at, you know, ARPA funds moving forward. I would not be interested, because these guys, these groups have done their due diligence to get their applications in. So I would, I would not be interested in withholding funds from them potentially, or changing, changing the application process now that they've, that they've gotten it in. So to be fair to them for following the rules and doing what we, what they've been asked to do.
So clarify that those, these applications are for two-year funding cycle, so, right? Cause I've heard some talk about taking it to one year. These applications are for a two-year.
I, I would advocate, I would advocate continuing with the two-year now, and then after this biennium, perhaps moving it to a one-year. Because again, in fairness to these groups that have gotten in, with the caveat being that if we can use ARPA funds, perhaps we run an adjacent one in the interim and use that money for those other nonprofits who didn't get to apply.
Or use the ARPA funds for these that
Either way, yeah, either way.
And one other question, why, so I heard him say that the citizens that are on the board now can't serve and there's a struggle. Why, why are they not eligible to serve? Is it like a one-term thing or?
One sitting up here.
I mean, is it, what?
I think a couple of them just opted, have opted out.
Okay, interesting.
The other thing I thought
The, the other one was councillor Coleman and a former The the other one was councillor Coleman and former councillor Coleman told me she was not interested in serving on this panel after the last one.
Okay. The other thing I thought of, if you wanted, you know, non-counselors to serve as folks off the budget committee, the non-counselors off the budget committee, that'd be a good source of folks.
I mean, the only problem, and and we have this problem up on council too, but the only problem with community members in our sides of the community is literally as I sit up here. And think through my personal rolodex of people in the community that would want to join. They're all belong to these different nonprofit organizations.
And I I do kind of have a little bit of an issue with the folks deciding on who gets the money sitting on the boards of these things. I think that doesn't pass my smell test. I I agree, you know, I can agree that it probably doesn't violate any technical, you know, conflict of interest rules, but it's kind of a smell test.
Going through my rolodex too, I could think of people outside the memberships of some of these nonprofits. I think we come up with. We try and have to do a little bit of ground pounding to be able to get them to show up and go. But I'm aware of a few folks that want to get involved. Haven't been involved yet, or maybe want to change their involvement. So I think it would be important to do something outside of the nonprofit list of people to make these decisions. I think we could do.
All right, cool. So I'm planning on the direct, go ahead, Don.
I just one other thought as far as retail and things. I mean, I think I'd like to maybe really tie this to council goals. If we're talking about, you know, reworking this moving forward. And part of that may be getting our goals better. So that these things that we want to fund actually fit under a goal clearly, but but I'd like to see that tight because the way I think it's worded right now, it's an it's an or. A council gore, a council goal or a public need or something or else. So I'd like to see that tightly coupled.
All right. So we like the program. We're going to keep it as a two-year program. Who wants to serve on the committee? We got Kathleen volunteering. Anybody else want to serve on it?
I'm happy to, but I'm on the chambers.
Action centers. That's the problem.
Yeah.
You you have kept me off of the art move, so I'll go ahead and volunteer.
All right, man. You're on there. All right.
Again, I'm applying to be on the action center as well, so.
Jeremy.
Again, yeah.
All right, cool.
We got Jeremy, Carl and Kathleen.
All right, perfect.
You got that? You're running with it? You'll call us to order.
All right. With that, I will adjourn our Sandy City Council work session. We'll conclude at seven o'clock. I'll call this Sandy City Council meeting to order. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to our Sandy City Council meeting. I will start off with a quick review of tonight's meeting. And we will go to a roll call, then we'll call for any changes to the agenda. I will then go to public comment. Jeff, have we had anyone sign up for public comment?
No, Mayor, we have not.
Okay. Um, with that, um, there will be a a consent agenda that has our city council meeting minutes from September seventh, the renewal of our intergovernmental agreement between Clackamas County and Sandy Transit. And a resolution for a TA grant application for a comp plan update. Under ordinances, we have a public hearing legislative land use for our parks and trails master plan. As well as a public hearing on quasi judicial land use for three, seven, six, eight, five, Olson Street annexation. Both of those, there will be an opportunity for public comment. On old business, we have the consent of assignment for the Hoodview disposal franchise. Under new business, we have a cover structures, general fund program authorization and guidelines approval. We'll go to our report from our city manager. And we'll conclude our meeting this evening with our committee and council reports. With that, Jeff, will you please call the roll?
Yes, councillor Pete told here, councillor Smallwood.
Here.
Councillor Sheldon.
Here.
Councillor Walker.
Here.
Councillor Exner.
Here.
Councillor Hopkinson.
Here.
Mayor Pulliam.
Here. And we will go to changes to the agenda. I will note a change to the agenda. We won't be having our presentation of the oath of office for Police Sergeant Samuel Craven. We'll go ahead and have that at our next Sandy City Council meeting. Uh, with that, um, let's go to our. With that, there are also no public comments for tonight's meeting that's been submitted. So we'll go to our consent agenda. Is there discussion or do I have a motion to adopt? There's a motion by councillor Pete told and a second by councillor Exner. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed. Motion carries.
Mayor. I apologize. I'll just note for the record, we did check with the planning staff and there were no other conditions on that funding.
Oh, great. Thank you. Under ordinance is, let's go to our public hearing for legislative land use. I will open this public hearing for state land use filed twenty-one zero three five CPA at seven oh four. Any extensions from the hearing body? So any conflicts of interest? And calling for the staff report, Kelly.
We'll go ahead and do the introduction, Mayor, Jordan, with the city manager. I just wanted to say it's been a long journey, but we're. Pretty thrilled to be here tonight presenting the Parks Master Plan for your adoption. I think it was two thousand nineteen when we embarked on this. And I know some of you have been working on this. Yeah, seventy. I was gonna say even longer than that. It's been a long time coming. And all the background work that our parks board and former staff put into, well, first, the the old plan, which set the groundwork for this massive update. And then getting this plan off the ground to have a new Parks and Trails Master Plan for the city of Sandy. So I do want to thank. Environmental Science Associates, who was our consultants on this project, Tracy Johnson, who did the presentation. Uh, in June, presenting the plan to the city council and the planning commission. I want to thank Nancy and Abnett, who was the project manager, a former community services director who. Uh, helped shepherd this plan. Of course, all the technical advisory committee members and all the members of the public that were involved with this project. Before and through COVID, which, you know, involved virtual open houses and real open houses and surveys and things like that. To provide input into the future of our Parks and Trails Plan for the city of Sandy. As I said, the final draft plan was presented to the city council in June, where Tracy gave that presentation. We attached a link to that presentation again. To jog your memories. And then it was presented to the planning commission last month, which they forwarded a recommendation to the city council for adoption. The incorporated into our comprehensive plan is really the formal way to adopt the Parks and Trails Master Plan for the city of Sandy. After that, there's a couple more actions to truly implement this plan. We have code development code changes that will are being processed at the planning commission right now and be coming back to the city council in October. And then also we're working with consultants, the FCS group, who've been, we've been working with on other projects on updates to our SDC system development charges. To help financially and implement this plan. And then there's some, you know, decisions for the city council too, in terms of. Uh, the use of our, you know, fee and loo dollars and SDCs for constructing, you know, the future parks and trails for the city of Sandy, which I know is the fun stuff. After you have these plans done. So I'm going to hand it off to Kelly and his team to talk about sort of the the process for for doing this formal adoption. Um, and the comprehensive plan amendment to formally adopt the plan. But I did just want to say thank you to the council and everyone who's been involved with this, and especially Nancy and Tracy and and the technical advisory team.
Uh, thank you, Jordan. I'm just going to hand it off to Shelley tonight, actually, since she's the planner of record on this. The only thing I was going to mention, in addition to what Jordan just mentioned, is we did receive one public comment. That I forwarded to the mayor and council this evening. It was from a Dave Vanderhay, I believe. He, uh. He has a misunderstanding of how measure fifty-six notice works. This. This project or this adoption process does not require measure fifty-six notice. So I did, I did forward it to you because he asked me to do that, but I just wanted to let you know that this is not. Um, a project or an ordinance that would require measure fifty-six noticing. And with that, I'll hand it over to Shelley.
Great. Thanks, Kelly. Let me share my screen. Okay, so rather than go into kind of the substantive details of what's in the Parks and Trails Master Plan, I'm going to be focusing mainly on. The procedural parts of adopting it through a comprehensive plan amendment. If you do have any questions about the contents of the plan, Tracy Johnson from the consultant team is here tonight to answer any questions that you might have about that. So the request for this is a type four comprehensive plan amendment. As Jordan said, a comprehensive plan amendment is the procedure by which. We adopt the Parks and Trails Master Plan. As part of Sandy's comprehensive plan. And just a little bit of background, the previous plan was published in nineteen ninety-seven. This new plan has a fifteen-year planning horizon. It plans through the year twenty thirty-five.
Shelley, can I stop you just a sec? Or do you think you're screen sharing because you're not?
I'm not. Okay, uh, it says I am.
My mistake. I'm sorry. You got a button. Sorry.
Okay.
Over here.
Go ahead.
Okay, so this new plan reflects the current conditions of all of our parks and trails facilities throughout the city. It recommends locations and types of new parks, whether that's a regional park or a neighborhood park. So it recommends locations of new types of parks and trails. It recommends updates. And. Um, making existing parks and trails. It recommends updates for those. And then finally, it recommends funding strategies for actually implementing what the plan recommends. So the review criteria for a comprehensive plan amendment, as found in the development code, is twofold. First. The amendment needs to be the best means of meeting and identified public need, which we've already determined by embarking on. Creating a new Parks and Trails Master Plan, that that was the best method for meeting the public need of. New and existing parks and trails being maintained and upgraded. And then it also needs to meet applicable statewide planning goals. So I'm going to very briefly go through the statewide goals that are applicable to this application. I kind of go into more detail in the staff report, but very briefly. Goal one, citizen involvement is applicable. You'll read in the plan that a number of surveys, stakeholder interviews and open houses were conducted. Additionally, as part of the adoption process, we're holding these public hearings with planning commission and city council. Goal two is land use planning. Goal two refers specifically to cities needing to have a comprehensive plan. And the updated comprehensive plan, which we are currently working on, will reflect the goals and priorities of the Parks and Trails Master Plan. Goal five is natural resources, scenic and historic areas and open spaces. We've met this goal through an inventory of open space and trails, which is actually one of the specific requirements of goal five. And then this plan also provides recommendations for improving open space and trails, parks and trails. And then goal eight is recreational needs. Again, there's a specific requirement to plan for the recreational needs of current and future residents, which this plan does. It uses. Population projections from Portland State University to project future. Population and population growth to determine what the needs are today and what the needs are going to be through twenty thirty-five. Planning Commission held a public hearing on this plan adoption on August twenty-third. And they voted unanimously to recommend that city council adopt the Parks and Trails Master Plan as an amendment to the comprehensive plan. This is done through ordinance two thousand twenty-one twenty-six. Here is suggested language for moving to adopt. That ordinance. And then I also just want to reiterate. At the time of the staff report and at the time that this presentation was created, we had not received any public comments. And but we did receive that email today from the property owner who was concerned that. Um, the plan showed a trail going through his property and he believed that that triggered a measure fifty-six notice. Which according to our city's attorneys, it does not. Additionally, you know, that the exact locations of where the parks and trails are going to be in the plan are conceptual and. It would only be through development of a property that. Developing a particular park or a trail would be triggered. Um, so we have Tracy Johnson here from ESA, the consultant scheme, to answer any questions you have about. The contents of the plan. Otherwise, Kelly, myself or David Doofman is here, can answer questions about the procedural aspects of adopting the plan.
Any questions? All right, let's proceed to public testimony. Here's guidelines for those who wish to speak. Please try to avoid repetition. As someone else has already expressed the same thoughts. It is sufficient to state that you agree with the statements of a previous speaker, if that's all you say. If you have documents, maps or letters that you wish to have considered by the body, it must formally be placed in the record of this proceeding. To do that, either before or after you speak, email your materials to recorder at CI dot Sandy dot OR dot US and staff will make sure your evidence is properly processed. To offer public testimony, for those of us joining in person this evening, hey Tyler, please raise your hand and indicate if you wish to speak. If you're participating online, click the raised hand button and wait to be recognized. If you're participating via telephone, dial star nine to raise your hand and wait to be recognized. I'll call on each person when it is your turn to speak. Each participant will receive three minutes to testify. Jeff here will let you know. Uh, when you have twenty seconds remaining. Our council rules require each person to state their name and address for the record. I will now call for testimony on the proposal. Please remember to raise your hand or dial star nine.
Okay, Mayor, I'll just wait a second for any raised hands. And Mayor, I do not see any raised hands.
All right, I now call for staff recap and recommendation.
Um, I have no recap. Our recommendation is to go with planning commission's recommendation to adopt the Parks and Trails Master Plan as a comprehensive plan amendment.
Great. I will now call for a motion to close the public hearing.
Make a motion close the public hearing.
Motion by councillor Smallwood and a second by councillor Hopkinson to close the public hearing. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed and aye. Motion carries. All right, discussion.
Question about the email that we did get. Can we have a comment from Mr. Doofman about the measure fifty-six? And how it applies here?
Sure. You can, can you all hear me? Okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. So, you know, there are certain comp plan amendments that. Measure fifty-six does apply and basically measure fifty-six notice is a notice that we would send to individual property owners. Uh, in certain cases, in certain legislative enactments that the city might consider to either its comp plan or zoning ordinance. The the trigger though is whether the the ordinance either changes the base zoning of the property. So it would go from, let's say, you know, some sort of residential zone to a commercial zone or, you know, within a certain residential zone to another residential zone. Uh, or that it either essentially limits or prohibits uses that were previously allowed in the zone. Uh, and the Parks Master Plan itself doesn't do either of those things. There's no rezoning that's happening, no zones on particular properties are changing. And there aren't really any uses in a, you know, a given zone that are changing as a result of this ordinance. So that's why. We believe measure fifty-six does not apply.
But if we have an identified trail in that area. On that property, property, and I gather this person owns, you know, it's roll tide development. So they own some big huge parcel that, you know, and would would likely have a trail. Located across it when it developed. Does that?
So yeah, that is, as Shelley said, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Is that I just, does that fall into the category of limited uses or or anything like that that you just said? Is that I just, does that fall into the category of limited uses or anything like that that you just said?
No, I don't think so, because what what there's, there was, when this measure fifty-six, when it was passed, the Oregon Attorney General's Office issued an opinion about it, which Luba has followed. And basically, the meaning of that, you know, a use that's either limited or prohibited is a use that's actually listed, like an outright permitted use, or a conditional use, or an accessory use. So really, you'd be looking to something, you know, at that level in the zoning code itself, the development code. And, you know, there will be some changes, as Shelley said, the development code that will follow. I, my colleague Chris has been working on those. I'm not even sure those really change any of the listed uses in any zone. But essentially merely because there's a trail that's conceptually identified on a property, that would be determined whether it's actually going to be something that's applied during the development process, but it still isn't itself a use that's being limited or prohibited.
Thank you.
Further questions or discussion?
I have a procedural question, I guess, in terms of implementing the master plan. There's going to be a development that will have this incorporated into the development, I'm sure. But how is the process work with those places, we don't have a development plan being implemented, thinking about existing parks? Other things that are out there, but we would like to implement certain portions of the master plan, but have no planning process driving it. How does that process go through to getting the project approved, especially if we're talking about conceptual trail locations? Conceptual ideas for different parks, how would that be implemented within the city? That's something that David know, or?
I think, you know, either David and I, or Tracy even can take a shot at this. Trying to get their way to clarify the question a bit. Talking about any of these proposed parks or trails are identified in the master plan. How do they get implemented when development occurs?
Or when development does not occur, so we don't have a development like a housing development or some kind of opponent that is ready to spend money on making sure that things happen that are amenities to the development, but more of maybe in an existing trail of a scene park, I mean, or for example, in the community center, there's no developmental plan there, but we are working our way towards having a plan. How do we implement things that are conceptual into identifiable locations?
Tracy.
Who is the person?
Tracy has a hand up.
Okay.
Hi, everyone. I am Tracy Johnson. I think I've met you all virtually in June at the work session. So I think the question about how the plan gets implemented is really going to be a combination of, it's dependent on staff and, you know, staff advanced planning and strategic planning and, you know, and support from council and commission to make things happen. So I can tell you how Nancy, you know, previously, the way that Nancy worked through the plan and implemented the plan was pursuing grants and applying SDC funding and occasionally some general fund. But I think most of the prior plan work that was done was developed through volunteers, SDCs, you know, fee in lieu or property acquisition from development. And, you know, and grants. And so for projects that come in that are part of a neighborhood, you know, a neighborhood plaque comes in and a neighborhood park is identified, trail corridors are identified, those are relatively easy. The bigger ones, like a community park, which is something that we identified in the plan that there's a bit of a lack of. One of the reasons that there's a lack of community parks or there are less community parks than there are neighborhood parks is because you don't really have the same exaction capability. You're not getting land or fee, you know, you're not getting land from a neighborhood that's going to be large enough. You know, the neighborhoods are never large enough that they're generating a park the size of ten to twenty acres that would be a community park. And so in order for those parks to happen, what needs to happen is there needs to be, you know, somebody needs to be writing grants to pursue a large park. Let's use, we can use the community campus as an example, because you have a very preliminary plan for that and what needs to happen. And I think, I believe I understood Kathleen was kind of advancing this, but really, what I would suggest for that project, for example, is pursuing a grant from state parks for master planning and design development for that. And through that process, you could figure out, you know, a more complete plan that's vetted with the public on what what uses you want to see there and how you want them laid out. You could get cost estimation to figure out how much the entire project will cost. And then probably identify a few phases, like phase one would be these elements for this amount of money. And then advance the design through. And then what happens is then you end up needing to, you know, then you can use SDCs or grant money or a combination both to pay for the development of it. The other thing, you know, as you've been getting in lieu money in lieu of land dedication for neighborhood parks, right now you have a lot of neighborhood parks and you don't really have a strong need of neighborhood parks. So the land fee in lieu money that is in the account currently could be used to acquire one or several large parcels that could be set aside to be developed into community parks through additional SDCs or grants in the future. And we did include some recommendations about that in the plan. Does that answer? That was a bit of a ramble, but I hope that answers.
Carl, can I, can I say something real quick?
Sure.
The other, the other piece, and maybe you've forgotten or haven't thought about is we are in the process of firing a new Parks and Recs Director. Who will be, I think, taking on some of that prioritization and things like that, implementation of this throughout. If that's kind of the direction that we're going, so.
It is, and just to some degree, I know that the city has had a lot of grants that have been applied for and established and trails, et cetera, put into place without a lot of understanding what the big picture consequences might be. Because I guess I was headed for, if, as long as we are doing a lot of these additions to our master plan, that we have a organizational design so that we don't get into some issues about what big picture issues might be for financing or maybe connectivity between other different parts of the city. There's some biodiversity issues mentioned in the plan that I think are well worth having a conversation about. As long as we understand that this is some things are big picture stuff, rather than just specifically a short piece of trail, maybe a new park or something of that sort. I'm looking for how that will be left organized. And is that the authority?
Yep, and I think, I think, I think that will be a great, yeah, I think that will be a great. I think that New Parks and Recs Director individual, whoever gets that job ultimately, and I think Jordan's going to talk about it a little bit in his, in his brief, but having sat on that committee this week, I think that's going to be in the wheelhouse of all those individuals. And each of them brought it up in their interview, so I think that, I think that's going to be something for them to tackle.
Is that a decision that we've made, or is that something that's a of the city manager? I guess I'm just trying to figure out authority wise.
Counsel, are you speaking about like specific like plant, park development or trails and how the projects are prioritized?
Something that just, a project comes up, a grant comes up, and people are excited about it. We got the grant, it looks like it's going to be ours. Who's the person? Who's the committee? Is it the council? Is it this new parks management person? Is it the city manager? Makes that decision. That's so simple.
So we have the master plan now, and inside that master plan, we do have a capital improvement plan that kind of prioritizes these projects. And as we go into each budget cycle, you know, staff works on, you know, using the input of these master plans of what should be budgeted. For example, we do have dollar, capital dollars budgeted for this buying in for whatever the the top priority part will be coming out of the master plan, which I think is, you know, Deer Point is up there. And so, you know, that that budget process happens, and then as we kick off, you know, doing these projects, we of course see grants, but we use SDC funds and the fee and the funds to implement the plan. And then there's a whole process that goes into the design, community involvement, there's probably an advisory committee. The council will, you know, we're pretty transparent, so, you know, staff will bring, you know, the proposed concepts to council for approval. And that's where you can have the input on making sure there's, you know, pollinator friendly habitat, things like that, Counselor.
Yeah, I'll just kind of build on that a little bit, just, you know, the way, the way it's, how you described it, but also that's kind of how it's worked in the past. We have an overall parks master plan. And where we have identified parks, when development happens in those areas, we expect a park to be developed there. If something's developing that doesn't have a park there, I think going forward, well, the tendency will be to say, you know, even if they want to develop a park there, we don't want another little pocket park. We want them to give us the money so that we can go ahead and put the money towards bigger community parks. But what happens is you have the conceptual master plan, and then what has happened since then is you've had like the Sandy River Park Master Plan. We had a kind of blueprint master plan for Mining Park and what all the projects needed to be done there. We had some, well, this actually, Tracy and ESA did some conceptual sites, more site-specific plans for Deer Point, Ponder, and what were the other two, Community Campus and Champion Way, yeah. And so you kind of do those things. And then when it gets down to actually, you know, what kind of playground equipment, there's this kind of, you know, you bring in some of the local neighbors and that kind of thing to kind of, I mean, that's what Nancy always did. She always kind of worked with the neighbors around there to kind of really do the site-specific, you know, what, what kind of play equipment or things like that that we want in there. And of course, the Parks and Trails Advisory Board were a big part of kind of getting that more specific, site-specific design plan done. And that's kind of how it got from kind of thirty thousand feet to on the ground.
Have we still want to adopt?
Ready.
Call for, call for a first reading?
I'm still Kathleen's thunder, I know.
Hey Mayor, this is ordinance twenty twenty-one dash twenty-six, an ordinance adopting a new Parks and Trails Master Plan.
Their motion to approve the first reading.
I move to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-one dash twenty-six.
Reading.
First, first reading. Yep, there are second, one second. There's a motion by Counselor Walker and a second by Counselor Smallwood to approve the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-one dash twenty-six. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Jeff, we go ahead and do the second reading.
Yes, this is ordinance twenty twenty-one dash twenty-six, an ordinance adopting a new Parks and Trails Master Plan.
I will motion to accept the second reading.
For a second. I'm on Kathleen.
Come on, I'll second that.
Counselor Smallwood, and a second by Counselor Walker to approve the second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-one dash twenty-six. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Congratulations.
Thanks, everybody, for your hard work.
Yep.
It's a good project.
Tracy. Shelley and everybody else.
And all the members of our community that were involved. And all right, let's go to our next public hearing. In an open public hearing, land use number twenty-one dash twenty-seven ANN at seven thirty-two PM. Any abstentions from the hearing body? Conflicts of interest? Has, I'm pulling the body for any ex parte contact, a reminder that site visits do count. Okay, I'm calling for any challenges to members of the hearing body to bring a challenge. And if you're joining us in person this evening, please raise your hand and wait to be recognized. If you're participating online, click the raised hand button and wait to be recognized. If you're participating via telephone, dial star nine to raise your hand and wait to be recognized.
And Mayor, I don't see any raised hands.
All right, we will now be going to testimony. If you testify, you must raise all issues you wish to address at this hearing. If your issue is not raised at this hearing, you may not be able to raise it at a later date for an appeal. Your comments should state why the application should or should not be approved or include your proposed modifications you believe are necessary for approval according to the standards. If you do not raise specific issues at the final evidentiary hearing or by the close of record, or fail to provide statements or evidence to follow the local, to allow the local government or its designate to respond to the issue, you will not be able to appeal that decision to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that particular issue. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to the proposed conditions of approval with enough detail to allow the local government or its designate to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. I'm now calling for the staff report. It looks like it's Shelley.
Real quick, it looks like Kelly has something she needs done. No? Okay, great. Okay, so we're talking about an annexation of three seven six eight five Olson Streets. It's a property about two point six two acres. You'll notice on this map that it is part of an unincorporated island. So the subject property is outlined in red, and then the city proper has that kind of opaque white overlay. So the property is within an unincorporated island. This is a request for a type four annexation, which is why it's going to City Council. According to our development code, there are three types of annexation. The first is annexation in conformance with conceptual zoning designation. The second is annexation plus a zone change, and the third is annexation plus a zone change plus a comp plan map change. And this applicant is requesting annexation in conformance with the conceptual zoning, which is single-family residential. So if this property is annexed into the city, it would have the designation of single-family residential. The conditions for annexation is found in the development code are, first, the site needs to be within the urban growth boundary, which it is. The site must be contiguous with city limits, which it is. This request must be in compliance with Oregon Revised Statute Chapters one ninety-nine and two twenty-two. There are no applicable statutes in one ninety-nine that apply to this annexation request. And all of the applicable procedural statutes in chapter two twenty-two have been met. There's the additional requirement that the property owner has not violated any tree retention requirements. This includes removing a certain number of trees based on acreage in the past ten years, and we've not identified any kind of tree removal that would violate that requirement. We also have a few conditions for island annexation. Again, this property is part of an unincorporated island. Typically, with an annexation, we require TPR or Transportation Planning Rule analysis. That is not required for an island annexation. Additionally, it needs to meet a logical growth pattern, which by the very nature of being an island annexation, we try to eliminate those as much as possible. And so incorporating in those unincorporated islands is in fact meeting a logical growth pattern. On this one as well, Planning Commission has recommended that the city, they've recommended unanimously that City Council approve this annexation request. This is associated with ordinance number two thousand twenty-one twenty-five. And then we also have the applicant present, Jeffrey Saul. He's the owner of the property to answer any questions you have. And if you want to give him some time to talk about his application, he's also prepared to do that.
All right, great. I'm now calling for the applicant's presentation for up to ten minutes. And Jeff will provide you with a two-minute warmup. Welcome.
Do I have audio?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great. Well firstly, I'd like to thank the efforts to date by Kelly and his staff in planning for their review and recommendation of this annexation. Like to thank the Planning Commission for their hearing and their referral to tonight's City Council meeting. And thank the council for taking the time tonight to consider this request. I really don't have anything to add to planning's recommendation, but I will make myself available for any questions as requested.
Thank you so much. Appreciate that. We'll now go to public testimony. Here are guidelines for those who wish to speak. Please try to avoid repetition if someone else has already expressed the same thoughts. It is sufficient to state that you agree with the statement. It is sufficient to state that you agree with the statements of a previous speaker, even if that's all you say. If you have documents, maps or letters that you wish to have considered by the body, they must formally be placed into the record of this proceeding. To do that, either before or after you speak, email your materials to the recorder at C I dot C N B dot O R dot U S. That will make sure your evidence is properly processed. Testimony for this public hearing will be called forth for groups. Testimony in favor of the proposal, testimony opposed to the proposal and neutral testimony. For those joining us in person this evening, please raise your hand at the appropriate time to indicate you would like to speak and wait to be recognized. If you're participating online, click the raised hand button at the appropriate time and wait to be recognized. If you're participating via telephone, dial star nine to raise your hand and wait to be recognized. I'll call on each person when it's their turn to speak. Each person will receive up to three minutes to testify and Jeff will let you know when you have twenty seconds remaining. Our council rules do require that each person state their name and address for the record. I'm now calling for testimony in favor of the proposal. Reminder, state your name and mailing address for the record. You'll have up to three minutes and Jeff will give you a twenty second warning.
And Mayor, I don't see any raised hands.
Okay, and now calling for testimony against the proposal. Reminder, state your name and mailing address for the record. You'll have up to three minutes and Jeff will give you a twenty second warning.
Mayor, I don't see any raised hands.
I'm now calling for neutral testimony. General comments, neither for nor against the proposal. Reminder, state your name and the mailing address for the record. You have three minutes. Jeff will give you a twenty second warning.
Mayor, I don't see any raised hands.
All right, Shelley, you're next up. Would you like to give a staff recap or recommendation?
Um I have no uh recap other than uh recommending that you follow Planning Commission's recommendation to approve the annexation and adopt ordinance uh twenty twenty one twenty five.
Jeff, there's not much to rebut, but you do have rebuttal time up to five minutes. Would you like it?
I think I have on that.
All right, thank you. Um all right, now before I call for a close to the public hearing, there isn't, this is your last opportunity to ask any questions for the applicant. Is there any questions?
I have a question to the staff.
Uh you'll have plenty of time for questions for staff. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I moved to close.
Go ahead.
I moved to close the public hearing.
I'll second that. So motion by Counselor Exner to close the public hearing, a second by Counselor Pete's old. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. All right, discussion. Questions, Kathleen?
I just had a question about the tree. Uh is it Shelley or Kelly? Uh Shelley? Uh there there it looks like there are a few trees in the very corner of the site and and I know that maybe that doesn't come into play until it gets developed or something. Um is that right? Can you just kind of speak to whether or not the trees that are there are going to be?
So uh we don't know. Um uh we don't know what's going to happen with those trees because the applicant hasn't uh submitted any kind of development application. Um all all that uh can be considered um in this annexation application is whether or not a certain number of trees have been removed in the past ten years. Um and uh that is not the case, that any trees have been removed in the past ten years or that that particular number of trees have been removed.
Uh this is Kelly. I can add that if it was to develop in the future, which would be a separate land use application, but say they subdivided this or um and developed it with more single family homes on it. At that point, they would have to retain the number of trees as specified per acre in the development code. I believe a few of those trees most likely would be removed because I think road right away would probably necessitate the removal of some trees along there, but um they would be required to retain trees still.
Thank you.
Question on uh the statement of fact seventeen, can you explain around the sewer and the need to connect this? I just want to understand whether there's a city impact or cost associated with that commitment or is that all being borne by the applicant?
Sorry, I'm just reviewing the staff report right now. Um. So uh Mr. Sell did submit some information about a sewer easement. Um. There are some requirements that because of gravity, gravity, um any kind of sewer connection would need to come from the west. Um you couldn't, so that's the reason why he submitted information related to an easement. Um we just put this in as a condition that any future um development will require that easement. Um so uh this is not so much a condition for annexation as it is a condition for future development. Um if the property owner does decide to develop the property, um this condition would uh need to be met.
And and that, but that it would be met at his expense, the applicant's expense, not the city expense, correct?
I don't want to say the wrong thing. Um Kelly, would you be able to answer that?
But what's is the question with the sewer extension to be at the applicant's expense or the creation of the easement?
Either or both, because both are referenced here in number seventeen.
Um I don't, as Shelley said, I don't want to say the same thing either. Typically, the developer would have to pay for the sewer extension and also create the easement at their own cost and work out, you know, acquiring the easement from the other property owner. However, there could be a case where the Public Works Department gets involved and or assists or gives credits. So I I don't want to say, like Shelley said, the wrong thing because she'll, you know, my department doesn't oversee the sanitary sewer system. So typically, yes, it would all be on the applicants, on the applicant to pay for everything, but I I just don't know because I don't know um what sort of uh arrangement there would be for that extension.
That would be, oh, ask them to oversize the sewer line or something to accommodate others.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I was just going to say, yeah, if it's just a matter of serving their own property, that's going to be on the applicant. To the extent that the city said we need you to do that and other things, then that that could involve potentially city money.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, I'll call for the first reading.
I have my place all ready to go. I'm sorry, just one moment.
That's a question.
This is ordinance twenty twenty one dash twenty five. An ordinance approving annexation of one property totaling approximately two point six two acres and assignment of S F R, single family residential zoning in conformance with the twenty seventeen urban growth boundary expansion analysis.
Sir, a motion to accept the first reading.
Make a motion to accept the first reading.
There are second.
Also.
Motion by Counselor Pete's all the second by Counselor Exner to approve the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty one dash twenty five. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Jeff, how about the second reading?
This is ordinance twenty twenty one dash twenty five. An ordinance approving annexation of one property totaling approximately two point six two acres and assignment of S F R, single family residential zoning in conformance with the twenty seventeen urban growth boundary expansion analysis.
Do have a motion to accept the second reading.
I make more to the second reading.
There are second.
Second.
There's a motion by Counselor Walker, a second by Counselor Sheldon to accept the second reading of ordinance twenty twenty one dash twenty five. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. All right.
Well, welcome to the city moment.
Well, yeah, welcome. Right.
In thirty days.
Thank you, Counselors.
Thank you. Um all right, moving forward to old business consent of assignment for Hoodview disposal franchise. Jordan, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor. Um this is a returning to you with the the consent of assignment of franchise that we hold with Hoodview Disposal and Recycling. Um on September seventh, the City Council received information about the request um and information about Waste Connections, which is ultimately the the company that is acquiring uh Hoodview. Um it's a little more complicated with that, which is subsidiary of Waste Connections, being K Hoot Companies Holdings, uh which has been acquired and acquiring than the the different companies of the K Hoot business, including Hoodview, Hoodview Disposal and Recycling. Um so we presented this uh the September seventh meeting. The council had some feedback uh wanting to ensure that the terms in the franchise were um were going to be upheld, including the the spring uh cleanup day, uh which they did confirm. We also heard from uh Jason Hudson and Ray K Hoot at that meeting um about their commitment, um especially from Mr. Hudson about uh the trucks will look the same, saying they're finally bringing the same staff and providing the same service um and using the same equipment. Um and uh Waste Connections is more than capable of writing the service of uh collection of recyclables and and waste uh in the city of Sandy. Uh they've been doing this for a number of years. They're one of the largest haulers in North America. Um so we don't have any uh concerns about their ability to deliver the service. The council also had questions about the term of the franchise. Um we did some research. Uh that term arrangement with the successive tenure revolving terms um was apparent in all the franchises with Hoodview um disposal. Uh all the cities are continuing that um provision. We did uh um uh negotiate NAS Waste Connections and and Hoodview to open that turn and see if they would be open to a franchise amendment um after the consent of um the the consent of the assignment, which they're open to converting it to a seven year, which uh these days in this business is a very short term, I would say. Um so uh thank you uh David and to um the K Hoots and and Waste Connections for uh coming to the table on that. Um and you know, ultimately, the council always has the ability, if the contract is not being performed uh to to give notice of termination, which again, uh staff doesn't have any concerns that uh this company will not be able to deliver on those services and uh again, with the confidence that the existing personnel and drivers and franchise will be in effect. So our recommendation is to uh approve uh and consent to the assignment of the franchise agreement from Hoodview uh to K Hoot Companies Holdings, which is uh subsidiary of Waste Connections.
Questions for staff? Like, I feel good. That's where we're at.
Yeah, I appreciate uh after bringing up a couple of the concerns I did and a couple others did that they addressed those and I think moved in the right direction for that.
I do want to thank David too, uh for filling in and doing a lot of the late work and the quick turnaround time to to work with the companies and pull this together.
All right, do we have a motion? There is a suggested motion on page two of the staff report.
Happy to read it. Thank you. I moved to adopt resolution twenty one, twenty twenty one dash twenty eight, consenting the assignment of the city's solid waste franchise agreement with from Hoodview Disposal and Recycling Inc. to Kahoot Companies Holdings Inc., a wholly owned subsidiary of Waste Connections U S.
Thank you. Sir, a second.
Second.
There's a motion by Counselor Hopkinson and a second by Counselor Smallwood. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. All right. Thank you, uh everybody, David, Jordan, uh staff uh for your work on that. Under new business, our cover structures, it feels like it's just always here. Uh it's our cover structures, general fund program authorization and guidelines, not to steal your thunder, Jordan, but we may all remember we gave direction to staff at our last meeting to do this for our benefits through our general fund. Jordan, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll let David do the presentation. Yeah, you have a good intro on this. Um hopefully, this is uh pretty clear, but creating that that city um side of the program, which I think was a very uh good catch by Counselor Hopkinson on on making sure that we had uh the same rules in place on the city side as we do in the in urban renewal agency. Real brief, David.
Yeah, I was just about to say, hopefully, I'll keep this one real short, Mr. Mayor. Um we're just returning uh to you back from uh September seventh meeting with um the program guidelines as requested. Um uh you'll note there in the staff report that uh the changes that we made, tables and chairs have been eliminated. Um we added the uh industrial park zoning designation because both of the potential businesses that could apply for this that are outside of the urban renewals are are zoned I one. Uh there's also a quick, a brief clarification, uh that one structure per business and a couple of minor uh wording changes for clarity. Um like I said, uh the uh program guidelines for the proposed program are attached.
All right, thank you. Sir, any questions for staff?
Well, one question. Why the uh one for business? I'm not saying that we should put two or ten, but why the limitation?
Um equity reasons mostly.
Because I I mean, when we did meet, granted, it was the the Urban Renewal Board when we met, we did talk about, at least I brought up the the case of Sanlandia could use another one. Not saying that we should go put one in right away, but it would sure make it look and be more functional and tie that into the city. So we, I know this is the city side version, but versus that, the the urban renewal.
I mean, that that uh whether or not to to allow businesses to have what more than one structures entirely within the scope of council.
Yeah, and we could have a business that owns multiple facilities potentially. I mean, right now, we don't. But we could have somebody who owns multiple businesses.
Yeah, I I think we can certainly entertain a motion that uh adopts a program that doesn't limit limit the structures. Uh because I I'm thinking the same property you are, so I remember that conversation.
It's always up to our review of.
Yeah.
We want to, right, go. Yeah, a presentation that it makes sense, then obviously.
Anyone want to make a motion to adopt with that change?
Thank you.
Oh.
Go for it.
Let's see, I'm going to establish the permanent outdoor covered structures program general fund and to improve the program guidelines as recommended by staff with the modification to eliminate the single structure clause.
For a second.
Oh, second.
There's a counselor, there's a counselor.
Yes.
There's a motion I by Counselor Hopkinson and the second by Counselor Exner. Uh uh all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you, David.
Thanks, Dave.
Staff and everybody for that and and the dawn for the uh for the direction in the last meeting. Uh with that, Jordan, you're up for a city manager report.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. Um so we have a a date for the fireworks show, October twenty ninth. Um following the football game uh that evening, the home Sandy football game. Um thank you to Tyler for uh working on the logistics and trying to pull this together with multiple parties. Uh thank you to Clackamas County Bank versus the school district too. Um so uh the idea there is we have a captured audience. Um school district's pretty confident that we'll be able to pull it off with parking uh with the the other lots, uh like the one on the Northwest and um you know, the uh you know, be able to shepherd that with maps and signs and things like that to make sure that people that are not at the game can also enjoy the end of the fireworks. Um and so uh you know, it's a nice opportunity to people to kind of stay and watch after the game.
Who are you playing, you know?
Who are you playing on the? David, yeah.
Final game?
Cool.
Yeah.
It would have been cool last Friday.
Yeah.
When? First time in twenty years?
Yeah, hold on, that twenty year thing that we didn't play them for seven of the twenty years.
It's true, it's true.
I know, I know, I know, I know.
But still.
I want to check the record though, because when I was in high school, we'd be graduating for the first time in fifty years and I'm like, wait a second, we need to check the record. All right.
So I, so thanks for the the help on that, counsel. Uh um the idea of doing it on a Friday evening, um I think is a is a good one and it's also Halloween weekend. So we can also do some other fun stuff around around that. Um uh the update on the person recreation director recruitment. Uh thank you to the panelists for participating this last week. Uh Lori said we have some great candidates and uh finalist interviews will be this week. Um we are also uh in the middle of recruiting for the public works slash in city engineer position that is out. Um that is being assisted with by uh Strategic Government Resources, S V R, on the nationwide search for that position, which um hopefully we have the same luck that we are so far having with our other director position. So those are in the works and in making progress. Um on the uh the look ahead for the council meetings, we do have some um you know, some some work sessions coming up. Um I know we need to meet with the homeless task force again to get that um kind of set up and teed up for the city council to have a work session on. I know there's interest to have a community campus work session coming up on uh some policy decisions and check ins on that project. Uh wastewater system improvements, especially on communications, uh is something that we're going to uh put on the docket. But as far as for October fourth, uh we have government uh government relations update with PAC West. Uh so you know, as you recall, a couple of months ago, they said they will be coming back in the fall with some some actions and updates uh for the city council uh to work with. We also have uh a consultant contract approval for the company as a plan update. Um so council council gave us authorization um of the resolution for um seeking a grant fund, uh a grant for that, but we're also. Um, of the resolution for um seeking a grant fund, uh a grant for that, but we're also progressing with the the city funds. To hire consultant to help kick off that project and get it moving, um to looking forward to that. As far as the council packet, we had a comment, a email from Counselor Walker about, you know, the packets going out on on Friday this last week and. I I um told Counselor Walker, I'll take some of that blame being out of town for most of the week last week, I was behind in my reviews, but. Um, the turnaround times for some of these items too, especially the franchise agreement was um. Uh, sort of delayed until Friday, really, until we finalize those negotiations, I think in the future, if the council and the mayor are okay with it. We may proceed with publishing what we have and adding and informing when those items are added, and we've done that sometimes. Maybe can be more consistent about identifying what items are coming in late. And I think just as a general, you know, Jeff and I have been working hard to, you know, trying to meet the council's expectations for quality of staff reports and in depth. And that's taking some time and sort of internal work to get them in a position to present in front of the council. Um, and and getting that quality. And the two week turnaround time uh is is short, we got a lot of things that are coming through, you know, that take reviews and take staff work to write the reports. And so it really, if you look at the internal process, it's a short turnaround time for staff from this council meeting to the next to get a report in by. Friday of this week for the next meeting, um so we're, Jeff and I are working internally on on helping staff achieve that and get the reports in the way that. I know council wants to see and what staff want to see too, so appreciate those comments, we don't feel good about it when the packets go out late to you guys. It doesn't give enough time for you and also the public, and we'll continue to really try to meet our our goals of getting them out on Wednesdays.
Um, Jordan, nearly caveat I want to add to that is when Jeff promotes the agendas on social media and online. I'd love for the agenda to be as complete as possible before he does that advertisement. That way, when our, you know, our neighbor gets on there and sees the agenda, they see the whole agenda, you know, what we're gonna be.
Okay, yeah. And then lastly, uh, also agenda related, the sending that I G A with Clackamas County, uh, we we see some great comments, some great feedback on that. It is gonna take some time, you know, ambitiously, we're like, yeah, we can come back, uh, you know, the council. Uh, it needs to be tabled a little bit longer, uh Greg's working on that, um, we may cycle through this standing that advisory board again. Um, so just asking for a little more time on on processing and and building up that business by the council. Thank you.
Thank you, and Don.
So, cause you guys, you know, now that you've knocked so many things off your plate, here I am going to throw another one at you, but. I think it's time for us to address Airbnb and BRBO type rentals in the city limits. Maybe put some regulations, be some taxes, what have you. Right now, it's a free for all, and depending on where you live, if you happen to live next to one of these full time Airbnb houses. You're not a happy person. And so I think it's an opportunity for us to kind of look at our ordinance, other cities have done various types of of. Restrictions and and rolls around it, I think it's time for us to do it, so I I I would suggest either. It with with council's direction, maybe put that on the the uh. The short list for staff to look at the not too distant future, hopefully, something we could do without a whole lot of work, but.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to that, one thing I'd add to is I think we have to go through a process similar to that to be able to get the revenue generated from the hotel lodging tax as well. It's I don't believe we're getting right now.
Yeah, if you don't mind, I'd like to make a comment here, we have a number of things that come up individually by counselors that they suggest. And I would suggest that if council is in favor of that, we give some sort of straw boat or some sort of understanding that we are in agreement. If we aren't agreeing.
So I'm in agreement, my only problem is is I'd be a lot more in agreement after I sit down and talk to Jordan and Jeff about our our timeline and our path. You know, what we have coming down the pike as far as how fast we can get to it, I'm all for it, it's just where it lands in our priority.
And I'm I'm not under any illusion that we're gonna hit it next month, because we. We have a lot to do, but I I think to get it out in front and then, you know, as we're, as you guys and your staff are meeting the people and reading, it'll start. Percolating and maybe at some point kind of.
And counselors reach out to me too, you know, and and be pushing, you know, hey, I think this is something we need to address.
Other than that, you know. Real excited with the the pool committee, uh, they had a great session and uh some some good, good information, it it's. It's feels like it's got traction, which is cool, so I'll just, I'm gonna hold out and let them come in when they, when they're ready for their presentation, but. It's looking good.
Carl.
Uh, yeah, I've I've got a chance to meet with a bunch of folks who are very interested in moving forward with the. Pollinator city uh ideals and things that are going on that way, it's not an official committee for the city, but. There are several volunteers that are really excited about moving forward on it, it's one of the reasons why I asked question about. How you implement things that are not within a development, because they're looking at the possibility of some gardens, uh pollinator gardens and such, some. Some informational uh acts and that kind of starts to thinking about proposals. Pretty glad to see that particular thing go along, uh I met last week with the group uh. Down in the Rosin Lake area, uh, I called them the Beckham Creek Road Group and uh. Talked to them a little bit about uh how the progress was going, or in this case, mostly just data gathering. And the construction on the wish for treatment plant that's in existence now and some of the work done in our basin areas and. I think I got a lot of good positive feedback about how uh that they appreciate how the city is doing as much work as possible and trying to get. Both ends met, improve the capacity and to uh find ways to decrease the amount of influx into the system, so. I thought that went pretty well. Uh, I have one thing, I'm gonna hammer on it again, and it's not the weeds in our islands either. These repairs on the roads that are being completed and finished in the. Um, in the pipes that are going in mostly in uh the, I think it's basin. Whatever basin is I may end up here by performing, uh, most of the roads look like they're in pretty good shape when they're finalized, but. I gotta tell you, there's at least one road in there, right there next to the junction of Langen Sand and McCormick, that you've lost about two inches of. Paying, and I can bounce across that puppy uh pretty quick, but I see uh. There's some differences in the elevation there, I think it's worth it to make sure that those are right. I don't know if there's many more of those, but wouldn't hurt to go back through and check to make sure those things, the quality is correct. That, I'm done.
Um, I appreciate the um comment about um doing something like, you know. At the fireworks or some other city effort to honor Les Garren's passing, um, he was such a big. Part of this community, and I think it's really important to kind of um acknowledge his contributions over the years, so. I can help if needed in any way, I want to also give a huge shout out to Carol Cohen, um and and her. Huge team of support staff, Olga Gerberg and other staff and volunteers that helped stage the Sandy Corn Cross at the falls this weekend. Rain like dickens, but um. Curiously, those guys loved the rain, so it was a perfect uh spot for them, there were four hundred and twenty four racers and. Uh, Carol's event raised over fourteen thousand dollars gross in it, and so once the costs are covered, those funds go to help support our recreation programs. Um, Carol acquired over a hundred and sixty very nice awards, um like hydro flask gift certificates, outdoor gear from our. All our local businesses like autos and Next Adventure, so thanks to the our businesses for helping support this event. Um, and she also coordinated a cadre of volunteers and partners to help advertise layout course, stage the races and clean up. Um, there was a lot of folks from Bend, um, some of whom stated best western for the event, especially when the rain came. Um, and also we have the national women's cyclocross champion, and she also happens to be the fourth place world cyclocross. Women's champion uh biking in our race, so of course she finished in first place, big surprise. But um, yeah, it it was a big deal and it's something that really does promote the city of Sandy, um, I look forward to the. Um, you know, developing the community campus or something like that where we can hold it, hold it directly in Sandy, but um there's a huge amount of sandy presence there. Um, you know, people just know it's the city of Sandy putting it on, so. I'm gonna uh reiterate what uh Don said about Airbnb's, I happen to be one of the folks that live pretty close to one and. My neighbor was complaining to me the other day that, you know, somebody was that, you know, partying till seven A M and he's he's much more effective than I am, but still it's something that. Really needs a little bit of um kind of, I think, investment in our time and effort to kind of make, you know, I want to have these be. Biable businesses for the people that own them, but also recognize that their business is in our neighborhood and we need to coexist. Um, I do, I kind of prepared prepared some notes and questions for the Sandy Net I G A. That I will forward to you to just kind of, again, I, you know, want to reiterate that I love the sand net and I, I'm so excited to see it grow. I do, you know, I don't know if you call it a master planner, a business planner, whatever you call it, but just kind of address the, for the council and the residents. What is the direction and scope, we're planning to manage this outstanding service that we provide in an efficient and effective manner, so.
Rich. Uh, so I wanna, I really don't have a whole lot, I know, uh, Jordan, thank you for scheduling another homeless outreach, um, I know there's a. A lot of community voice about that, and so I think the quicker we can. Respond in that, um, I did read that ordinance and also just send you an email on a couple. Different things that I saw in there and and maybe it's just my reading of it, that's totally possible, as opposed to what it was intended to do, so. Um, but I'm looking forward to that moving forward, so thank you.
Uh, like it's been mentioned, uh participated in the interviews for the uh new uh person recs director. Uh, I'd like to compliment uh Angie and Tyler and anybody else who was working on bringing those candidates forward uh to the board, they were excellent candidates. I believe Jordan's sitting down with three of them, and so uh any of them will be fabulous, they will do a great job, uh each of them bring something a little different. To the table, and so uh I'll be very curious to see how it goes for you. I would like.
What's the timeframe on selecting that person?
As soon as possible. Well, yes, tomorrow, uh, final interviews, uh probably a follow up. Need to greet the staff, um, though we're talking, you know, hopefully an offer. Week or two.
October one, Spartan Day.
Uh, some great questions, a very in-depth interview process, and uh like I said, I I I think each of them really just did an exceptional job, so. Uh, very well done, um, I have been in contact, Catherine, and I talked a little bit before the meeting uh with Les Garren's family. And uh talking with him about the best way to honor him, whether it's through dedication of something through the city or the creation of a scholarship. They wanted to think about it and uh touch base with them again this week, I can't think of anybody who has been more instrumental uh in this community, so. And his loss, his loss will be deeply felt.
Is there a role staff complaining that as far as identifying possible things around the city or whether it's naming things or something we can do tomorrow?
Remember, guys, we kind of, we want to unveil it.
Yeah, to keep. Yeah, but I have been, like I said, in contact with his family and uh his loss will will be greatly felt uh throughout throughout this community. Um, and then lastly, a question for you, Jordan, how many uh employees do we have here at the city, do you know off the top of your head? Are we a hundred or less or a hundred or over?
Seventy eight.
Seventy eight, fabulous, and I don't have to mention the last thing I was gonna say. Awesome, thank you, and that's it, that's all I got.
Alright, thank you, Lori, that, Jeremy.
Yeah, is Chief Roberts still online here? Yes, um, so there, uh, just want to bring up, there is a semi truck, you know, tractor trailer. That continues to park on Langasand uh road there by the Catholic Church, and I only bring this up because we had passed something years and years ago. Um, after a log truck, another type of vehicle, brakes went out and came down and went across the road, right missing kids walking down the street. Unattended, you know, and those things um have nothing to do with just parking there, but it is a residential area. Um, and we had passed a code that, no, you know, these type of vehicles are not to park on the streets, also because. They really wear and tear on our roads, our our local residential roads are not made for that type of load, if you go out there, that road. I run and run on it every day, uh, but it is a, it 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 is just broken down, it is just amazingly broken down and and they move around, but. Um, it's also hard to drive down and get out of the way of it as oncoming cars come, so um, I just want to bring that up, chief. I know that there was one parking to parko for a while and finally got cat uh by the police to move on, but um. Yeah, if there could be some help on that, I think that'd be appreciative for the community.
Yeah, ju- if, counselor, could you just let me know again where that one is located so we can follow up on that?
Yeah, this morning, um, it's right there in front of the Catholic Church on Langasand.
Okay.
It it parks there because there's a long strip.
Sure.
Highway, but it it's it's a car loader today, it's a different type of semi truck another day, but. Um, it just is, I'm sure the person lives in in somewhere in the community over there and. Um, but it does uh wear and tear on our local streets, uh more than it it should, so. And then, um.
Okay.
There's a, I thought I read, I couldn't find it, maybe it was a different article I read, um, maybe it wasn't from Pac West. But um, an update on some of the legislative changes that are happening, uh coming starting in January, some of our housing and some of the. I guess I call them restrictions on this, us as a city council and as a city, community, more ten thousand, some of these uh housing things will change. More than it did last time, um, that are coming down and um kind of to get briefed on that, maybe. I don't want to call it a workshop, we have so many workshops, but I don't know how it want to be done, but maybe be able to have a little bit of dialogue, so we understand. Before we get, start getting told like, okay, we have to change these policies now because the law states we have to. But um, in reading that, there's a few more that have come down for density housing and in bringing that in, the competency, so.
Yeah, absolutely, I think B H put out a bulletin.
Or maybe, and maybe that's where I read it from, I couldn't find it on Pac West, so maybe it was David's.
Maybe we could do that for the work session too, it's with Pac West and dive into some of those bills specifically on the ones that are.
Yeah, cause the community doesn't understand that, you know, it's kind of above us and we have no real control over this, but. They're voting statewide affects that, so.
I feel like we need to be a little bit louder to our representatives about how we feel for them to be doing local land use planning at that level. I mean, at least we need to go on the record, we may not, you know, they may just ignore us, but.
So, anyway, that's just something I I I was reading and I thought, you know, if we could be. Be a little bit more ahead of the game, knowing what's coming down, so that we can then also tell people when they chew our ear off too.
Alright, thank you, um, couple of things, one is uh September eleventh, twentieth anniversary, I think like so many, it just brought up a lot of emotions. Brought us right back to that day, I just wanted to thank our, you know, frontline responders or firefighters and our uh police officers and everyone here in town. Uh, just uh heroes, um, council workload, just wanted to thank all of you, uh, you know, we have a lot of meetings. A lot of side meetings that people don't see, we all have our leads on responsibilities, a lot going on here in the city right now, so just, I know it's been a lot of a workload. Thank you to everybody for for everything that you guys do. Um, question on synchronized light, so I understand, I know that we've turned them on and they're speaking to each other and they're synchronizing. So, one thing that it feels like I am sitting at the lights for the side streets, like a lot more. And and it was something that I hadn't thought about, um, is, so in this, so ODOT and the whole point of these lights is to get people. Through town as fast as possible, but where we, where I specifically didn't think much about were the side streets. To get onto the highway and how it can back up, like on two eleven, there's been a lot of backup, a lot, there's been a lot.
Yep, exactly.
Are there ways we can address that or maybe engage in active conversations with ODOT about things that we can do to alleviate some of this?
Yeah, this is one of those um unintended, but kind of known that this could happen as. As you kind of work out the kinks, whatever, but there, I, we'll, we'll talk with them to see if there's a sensitivity or something like that, like can they dial it back or. Um, this has happened before when they manually did it.
Yeah.
Dan, right, uh, he's been trying to get traffic through town.
Yeah, that's great.
Just to kind of add to that, as somebody who lives on bluff, now with two schools letting out, and then the same time down bluff, it's it's pretty bad.
Yeah, and part of me too kind of feels like, I don't know, could it be like time, like on the weekends, let's get people through town, you know, during the the weekday. Uh, this, I feel like there's some some nuance.
Yeah, Saturday, two cars at a time to get through the intersection.
Right, that's wild.
Or a single school bus.
Yeah, so uh just wanted to raise that concern, a little bit of work to do there, and then finally on um Les Garren's. Uh, you know, he's been brought up, uh, you know, I have here, keep standing, you want to. You know, I have here, keep Sandy wonderful, I said in my remarks, Sandy's wonderful because of Les Garren's and and people like him and involvement in the Kiwanis and the Lions and just everything. FFA and agriculture and and you just, you couldn't go to a a community event without being graced by Les and and his his attitude and its nature. It's a big loss for our community in a lot of different facets and ways, and thank you for the work, Lori, and trying to find something that we can do to truly honor and moralize, you know, what Les meant to this community. And I just want to send our thoughts and prayers to his family and thank you, Les, for everything you did for our community. With that, I will adjourn our Sandy City Council meeting.